All right, that we did that pretty well. We're only a couple of minutes late. So I'm going to call the Montgomery County Board of Supervisors Monday, October 28th meeting to order at this time and our first action is to go into closed meeting. So we're going to have a motion that states be it resolved, the Montgomery County Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County, Virginia hereby enters into closed meeting for the purpose of discussing the following. Section 2.2-3711, number three, discussion or consideration of the acquisition of real property for public purpose or of the disposition of publicly held real property where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body. Number one, acquisition of real estate for potential county office space. Do I have such a motion?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call please.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Mr. Kitsch?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Fritjekowski?
Aye.
Ms. Demots? Mr. Grafsky?
Aye.
Chair Biggs?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
I need a motion to come out of closed meeting at this time.
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, and roll call, please.
Mr. Kits.
Aye.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Mr. Fritzekowski.
Aye.
Mr. Mott.
Aye.
Mr. Graski.
Aye.
Ms. Bone.
Aye.
Chair Biggs.
Aye.
Seven Eyes.
Okay, and then we're going to have a motion to certify, and I will read what that motion will be. Whereas the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote, and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas Section 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the Board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County, Virginia hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies, and two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion conveying the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the Board. Do I have such a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Mr. Fritzekowski.
Aye.
Mr. Mott.
Aye.
Mr. Graski.
Aye.
Ms. Bone.
Aye.
Mr. Kits.
Aye.
Chair Biggs.
Aye.
Seven Eyes.
And now we're going to do something a little bit out of order. We're going to have the board go down in front to do a picture that is needed for later on, and then we'll come back and we will go ahead with the regular meeting. So, everyone, go ahead and come on down here.
All right, we've got the screen just going to be tight as we can when they get down here.
Do you want to do all of the board in the back?
Yeah.
I'll try to do that unless it's like...
It's all...
Oh, do you want to do one with this thing off?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, are you gonna... Oh, I thought, oh, you're just getting ready.
We're just figuring out how we're going to do this.
Okay. It's gonna be... Are you guys telling the others?
I guess.
Yeah. Reluctantly.
One at a time, you're showing up.
Um, if you can get the board in front of them behind, could you guys tip them? Okay. And if you fill in the cabinet. And then you guys can actually spread out. And then... Just go forward just a little bit, okay? Um, can this like front wheels or just scooch this? This is more even, yeah. More?
That's a technical term.
And then, yeah, and then, yeah, there we are. Okay. Yeah. Okay. There you go. Okay. You see me, Todd?
Todd's hiding. You just keep over here.
All right. I'm gonna take a couple, so, keep scrolling, keep laying, don't put anyone else. Museum. Awesome. Let me grab that. Okay, so, look at your face, look at your face. Thank you, awesome. Thank you.
It hurts my face.
Like, just smile.
Smile. Probably because somehow it's more than...
Be after game a little bit, I'm bad. Getting my steps. All righty. Okay, all right, at this time, we're going to go ahead with the regular part of our meeting. We're going to have a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance led by our county administrator, Ms. Hill.
Please rise for a moment of silence, and then I'll lead us in the pledge. Let us pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Supervisor Demott, forgot my speaker. We have with us tonight Katie Boyle from the Virginia Association of Counties to present Achievement Award, and so I'm going to ask her to come up at this time.
All right, Madam Chair, members of the Board, members of county staff, and guests, good evening. It's a beautiful drive down to Montgomery County, so thank you all so much for having me with you tonight. As was mentioned, my name's Katie Boyle. I'm the Deputy Director of the Virginia Association of Counties, and it's my privilege to be here tonight to celebrate your success and present you with a VACO Achievement Award. We at VACO are very grateful for Montgomery County's longtime support and participation in VACO. We know you all are certainly very familiar with our organization, but just to provide some background about us for those who may not be as familiar, we were founded in 1934. We serve and support your efforts as county officials. We support counties through our state and federal advocacy work, educational programs, member services, and communications efforts. So, a little bit about the Achievement Awards Program. We established this program in 2003 to recognize counties that have adopted innovative approaches to providing public services. We had three volunteer judges this year, and they followed several guiding principles when selecting winners, including whether the program offers an innovative solution to a problem, situation, or the delivery of services, whether the program promotes intergovernmental cooperation or cooperation with private enterprise in addressing a problem or situation, and whether the program provides a model that other local governments may learn from or implement in their own localities. The Achievement Awards Program's always been very competitive. That was definitely the case this year. We had record participation in 2024. We had 145 entries. So, our judges had a really difficult task ahead of them, but they selected 45 winners from 32 counties. So, you all are part of that elite, 31% of winning entries. I'm also proud to say this is Montgomery County's 10th Achievement Award. You've won Achievement Awards for seven years in a row, so you have a long track record of excellence that we wanted to recognize and celebrate as well. So, tonight, I am extremely proud to report that you all are the winner of one of our top three overall awards. It's my honor to present Montgomery County with the Best Large County Achievement Award for this Sensory Museum Program. It's a great program, and here to talk a little bit more about it is Kareem Khan, who's the Director of the Montgomery Floyd Regional Library, and I know he has some folks from the library board and library staff with him as well, so I'm going to turn it over to him to say a few words.
Good evening, Board, and Angie, and guests. I'm Kareem Khan. I'm the Director of Montgomery Floyd Regional Library, and we're honored to accept the award from VACO for the Best Large County Achievement Award. Let me tell you just a little bit about the Sensory Museum. The Sensory Museum is intended to meet the needs of patrons with disabilities. We launched it in 2023. It's a program typically held after hours in the library's community room, but has also been successful during regular operating hours. We dim the lights to reduce overstimulation from fluorescent lights, and calming music is played while the overhead projector projects visually stimulating images. Around the room, patrons can visit stations containing different tactile or visual sensory experiences such as water beads, rice bins, zen gardens, kinetic sand, glow painting with black lights, fiber optic lamps, plasma ball lamps, water painting, a sensory light projector in a tent that shines calming patterns and colors of lights onto the canopy of the tent. Occasionally, local therapy dogs participate in the program as well. As they leave, the Sensory Museum Program participants may choose a fidget toy as a tool to use in stressful or overwhelming situations. Patrons of all ages have enjoyed this program, remarking this has been very helpful for their neurodivergent teens and for neurodivergent selves. Sensory play can bring out a playful side in someone and help them unwind. Due to the positive response to the Sensory Museum, we have implemented it on a semi-regular basis throughout all branches of the MFRL system, and we've kind of extended the effort with sensory kits that neurodivergent persons who have sensory processing issues can check out and use while they're in the library with things to busy their hands with, noise-canceling headphones. So, this was in response to the need because, you know, as we work to make sure that nobody is excluded from our service, from our facilities, we're aware that persons with disabilities have a history of being excluded throughout libraries, and so we're really, we've been trying for a number of years to try and make sure we're addressing that. We feel this was another step on that road, and those who really guided us down the road... This is Alyssa Carpenter, and she was the prime mover behind this as part of our DCID Committee, which is the committee that works to try and extend our services to people with developmental, intellectual, and cognitive disabilities. She's on that committee along with Joanne Varatsko, Linessa Wheeler, Carrie Copus, Beth Newman, and together they, and everybody else, has, and this is Sarah Paul, who is Alyssa's, was Alyssa's supervisor. Alyssa has left us and is now a graduate student at Hollins University. So, if she looks, if she looks happy and tired, that's because she's a student. They're happy and they're tired. We really appreciate all the support we get from the county, and we hope to build on our success with this program and related programming. And, thank you, Katie.
It's my, it's my pleasure. Absolutely. So, it's, it is a wonderful program. So, when I was preparing to come down here today and, you know, reading up a little bit about the program, it was so exciting to see what an impact you've had based on the demand and the ability for parents and caregivers to take home some of its benefits with them.
Like, can everybody see me? Um, can this, like, front wheels are just scooches? This is more even, yeah. More?
That's a technical term.
And then, yeah, and then, yeah, there we are. Yeah, there you go. Oh, I can't. You see me, Todd?
You mean, honestly?
Okay.
Todd's hiding. You just keep up here.
All right. We're gonna take a couple, so. Keep scrolling, keep laying, don't put anything on your nose. Museum. Awesome. Okay, smile with your face, smile with your face. Thank you, awesome. Yeah, thank you.
It hurts my face.
Like, just smile?
Smile. Probably because it's somehow already there.
Get your breath out.
That's what we guess, it was just, it was just on paper.
Be up to a game a little bit, I'm glad.
Get in our steps. Alrighty. Okay, all right. At this time, we're gonna go ahead with the regular part of our meeting. We're gonna have a moment of silence and the pledge of allegiance led by our county administrator, Ms. Hill.
Please rise for a moment of silence, and then I'll lead us in the pledge. Let us pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Supervisor Demont, forgot my speaker. We have with us tonight Katie Boyle from the Virginia Association of Counties to present Achievement Award. And so I'm gonna ask her to come up at this time.
All right. Madam Chair, members of the board, members of county staff and guests, good evening. It's a beautiful drive down to Montgomery County, so thank you all so much for having me with you tonight. As was mentioned, my name's Katie Boyle. I'm the Deputy Director of the Virginia Association of Counties, and it's my privilege to be here tonight to celebrate your success and present you with a VACO Achievement Award. We at VACO are very grateful for Montgomery County's longtime support and participation in VACO. We know you all are certainly very familiar with our organization. But just to provide some background about us for those who may not be as familiar, we were founded in 1934. We serve and support your efforts as county officials. We support counties through our state and federal advocacy work, educational programs, member services, and communications efforts. So a little bit about the Achievement Awards Program. We established this program in 2003 to recognize counties that have adopted innovative approaches to providing public services. We had three volunteer judges this year, and they followed several guiding principles when selecting winners, including whether the program offers an innovative solution to a problem, situation, or the delivery of services, whether the program promotes intergovernmental cooperation or cooperation with private enterprise in addressing a problem or situation, and whether the program provides a model that other local governments may learn from or implement in their own localities. The Achievement Awards Program's always been very competitive. That was definitely the case this year. We had record participation in 2024. We had 145 entries. So our judges had a really difficult task ahead of them, but they selected 45 winners from 32 counties. So you all are part of that elite, 31% of winning entries. I'm also proud to say this is Montgomery County's 10th Achievement Award. You've won Achievement Awards for seven years in a row, so you have a long track record of excellence that we wanted to recognize and celebrate as well. So tonight, I am extremely proud to report that you all are the winner of one of our top three overall awards. It's my honor to present Montgomery County with the Best Large County Achievement Award for this Sensory Museum Program. It's a great program, and here to talk a little bit more about it is Kareem Khan, who's the Director of the Montgomery Floyd Regional Library. And I know he has some folks from the library board and library staff with him as well, so I'm gonna turn it over to him to say a few words.
Good evening, board, and Angie, and guests. I'm Kareem Khan, I'm the Director of Montgomery Floyd Regional Library, and we're honored to accept the award from VACO for the Best Large County Achievement Award. Let me tell you just a little bit about the Sensory Museum. The Sensory Museum is intended to meet the needs of patrons with disabilities. We launched it in 2023. It's a program typically held after hours in the library's community room, but it's also been successful during regular operating hours. We dim the lights to reduce overstimulation from fluorescent lights, and calming music is played while the, while the, while the overhead projector projects visually stimulating images. Around the room, patrons can visit stations containing different tactile or visual sensory experiences, such as water beads, rice bins, zen gardens, kinetic sand, glow painting with black lights, fiber optic lamps, plasma ball lamps, water painting, a sensory light projector in a tent that shines calming patterns and colors of lights onto the canopy of the tent. Occasionally, local therapy dogs participate in the program as well. As they leave, the Sensory Museum Program participants may choose a fidget toy as a tool to use in stressful or overwhelming situations. Patrons of all ages have enjoyed this program, remarking this has been very helpful for their neurodivergent teens and for neurodivergent selves. Sensory play can bring out a playful side in someone and help them unwind. Due to the positive response to the Sensory Museum, we have implemented it on a semi-regular basis throughout all branches of the MFRL system, and we've kind of extended the effort with sensory kits that neurodivergent persons who have sensory processing issues can check out and use while they're in the library with things to busy their hands with, noise-canceling headphones. So this was in response to the need because, you know, as we work to make sure that nobody is excluding from our service, from our facilities, we're aware that persons with disabilities have a history of being excluded throughout libraries, and so we're really, we've been trying for a number of years to try and make sure we're addressing that. We feel this was another step on that road. And those who really guided us down the road. This is Alyssa Carpenter, and she was the prime mover behind this as part of our DCID Committee, which is the committee that works to try and extend our services to people with developmental, intellectual, and cognitive disabilities. She's on that committee along with Joanne Varatsko, Linessa Wheeler, Carrie Copas, Beth Newman. And together, they and everybody else has, and this is Sarah Paul, who is Alyssa's, was Alyssa's supervisor. Alyssa has left us and is now a graduate student at Hollins University. So if she looks, if she looks happy and tired, that's because she's a student. They're happy and they're tired. We really appreciate all the support we get from the county, and we hope to build on our success with this program and related programming. And thank you, Katie.
It's my, it's my pleasure. Absolutely. So it's, it is a wonderful program. So when I was preparing to come down here today and, you know, reading up a little bit about the program, it was so exciting to see what an impact you've had based on the demand and the ability for parents and caregivers to take home some of its benefits with them and recreate elements of the Sensory Museum at home. So I really think it's a great testament to your work to build a caring, an inclusive community in partnership with local organizations and community groups that, that serve individuals with disabilities. Not to mention, it looks really fun. So we at VACO are so proud to recognize and acknowledge your work. I brought a plaque with me, as you've seen, to mark your achievement, but we'll also be doing some special recognition at the annual conference since you're one of our top three overall winners. So please allow me to congratulate you on behalf of VACO, and I hope to be back here again next year. Thank you all so much.
Well, first of all, thank you for making the trip and then going back also. And thank you to all the people that worked so hard on this from the library. Wow. It's really, and on behalf of the board, just thank you guys. Yeah. Yeah. Okay. All right. Hey. All right. Next, we have Dr. Noel Bissell that is going to sort of update us on, from the New River Health District. I know there's been a lot going on and a lot that's going to be going on. So we're anxious to hear from you.
Thank you. So, good evening. Thank you very much for having me. There is a lot going on. You all should have copies of this presentation. I'm going to go through it pretty quickly because it's, it's a lot, but certainly if you have questions, I'm happy to stop and discuss it further. If you want any follow-up afterwards, happy to discuss that as well. The first thing I wanted to talk about is our harm reduction program. This is what's being funded through the recovery ecosystem, which is the regional application for the opioid abatement funding. So harm reduction is pretty much everything that the Health Department does. It's about meeting people where they are. It's about risk mitigation and not elimination. There really is no elimination of risk. Nothing is zero risk. That's whether we talk about substance use or anything else that, that we do at the Health Department. And when we think about risk, we have to acknowledge that risk can be subjective and that people's perception of risk can be different, and that's based on their personality, that's based on their environment, experiences, and other outside influences as well. So we have to understand that that risk can change based on where people are and when they get there. So the biggest thing with harm reduction is to meet people where they are and to be nonjudgmental and to treat them with kindness and respect. And it goes on to focusing with any positive change. One of the things we like to talk about in everything we do is providing connection. And there's the quote that connection is the opposite of addiction. We provide so much more with our harm reduction. Everything is about education. It's just about listening. It's about acceptance, and then it's about referral to resources. Just a brief thing about the war on drugs. It started way back in the 70s when Richard Nixon declared illicit drugs public enemy number one. At that time, you know, he did kind of mention about doing some treatment things, but that didn't make the, the press. The press was that this is a crime. These people are criminals and, and they're bad people. And, and that's unfortunate because from there, I was in training in the 80s and 90s when the pharmaceutical companies and prescane and the marketing companies came out with prescription opioid drugs. And they pushed those, and they made pain the fifth vital sign. And doctors were bad doctors if we weren't treating pain, and we got bad ratings if we didn't treat pain. And our compensation got tied to pain. And then what happened was more and more people became addicted to these drugs because the pharmaceutical companies, even though they knew they were addictive, they pushed them as not addictive. So more and more people became addicted to these drugs. And then as there was more drug-seeking behavior, all of a sudden, we cut off the legal supply of drugs. We cut them off. Doctors were then bad for prescribing drugs. You can't prescribe those drugs. And so, of course, people sought illegal substances. It was very predictable. It was a very predictable outcome, unfortunately. And I will note that alcohol is a legal drug, but has a lot of the same consequences, both physically, emotionally, and societally, as any of the other drugs we're talking about. Just some numbers real quick. If you look at the bottom, in 1971, when the war, you know, drugs were declared public enemy number one, we had 6,700 overdose deaths. In 2022, overdose deaths peaked at 111,000. Last year, they were 108,000. This year, they will still surpass 100,000. If you look just a couple of lines up, the federal budget in 2023 was $39 billion. The total we have spent on the war on drugs since 1971 is estimated at $1 trillion. And yet, we have the Global Commission on Drug Policy and the United Nations saying the war on drugs doesn't work. So this is a really unfortunate consequence of the war on drugs. Stigma is the biggest thing. You know, people with substance use disorder are treated poorly by everyone, including people in the healthcare profession. It affects the quality of care they get. It affects them not wanting to seek care because they're judged. They already feel shame and embarrassment, but then they're treated differently. And they're treated differently than people who have other medical conditions which are very, very similar to addiction. So Rise Above is our substance use and harm reduction program, and we aim to create a nonjudgmental and supportive environment, offering harm reduction strategies, education, and resources. It's all about connecting with the individuals. We know that if we can connect with the individuals and they say that trust builds at the speed of relationships, we have to build those relationships. If we can connect with them, 75% of people can recover. So they can recover if we can connect with them and build those relationships. I'm not gonna play this video here, but I would encourage you to please, gabor mate, ask not why the addiction, but ask about the pain. And this video, childhood trauma leading to addiction, is very eye-opening. I would encourage everyone to look at this video about addiction and trauma. It highlights what we call adverse childhood experiences, and this is actually not something new. When I was growing up, we talked about children are a product of their environment. So this really shouldn't be new to us. But we have these experiences that, you know, children are in bad environments in the home or unsupportive or dysfunctional environments, and of course, they're going to have problems. We talk about abuse, whether it's physical, emotional, or sexual. We talk about neglect, both physical and emotional neglect, and then household dysfunction, such as substance use in the home, anyone being incarcerated. Domestic violence in the home is a big one. Divorce, or the mother, the mother being treated poorly is a very big predictor. And if you look at, these are just risk factors of people who have four or more aces or five or more of those aces, and you can see that there are risks of chronic disease of addiction and of just overall poor health outcomes are, they grow exponentially. And we know that a child who is raised in an environment with substance use has an eight to 10 times more likely chance of developing a substance use problem than a child not in that home. So this is our program. We started our program January 14th, and this is the data through the end of September. If you look, our initial visits are the ones, the enrollment visits are the ones in blue, and the recurrent visits are the ones in orange. And so I would point to you that we're building that trust. People are coming back to see us. Our enrollment visits have gone, you know, have sort of started to plateau, although they're going up more slowly. But people are coming back, and that's the biggest thing to take from this. If you look at the cumulative visits over time and over the month and the week, you can see that, that we consistently are seeing our patients, and they're consistently coming back to see us. And we know that if we can connect with them when they are ready, because they're not all gonna be ready at the same time, they're not all gonna be ready when we first make that connection. But if we just listen, if we accept, when they are ready, we can get them into the resort, you know, treatment and the resources that they need. This is just the drugs and methods of choice. You will see that methamphetamine is by far and away the most popular drug in the New River Health District. It is followed by the opioid drugs. And then if you look at the way we are using drugs of our participants, 85% and, and these, many people use drugs in more than one way, and that's why it adds up to more than 100%, but 85% injection drugs. But then we have those taking pills, we have those who are snorting, and those who are smoking. Just wanna highlight the social issues. And again, if people don't have their basic needs met, it's really hard to focus on recovery. But transportation, two-thirds of our people do not have a reliable source of transportation, and that's why we go to them. We go out in the community with a mobile unit, and we literally meet them where they are physically and emotionally. If you look at housing status, overwhelmingly, 70% do not have stable housing. They're, they're literally living out in the yards or they're couch-hopping with friends and family. This is our visit locations. You'll notice that Pulaski is the highest, followed by Jalison, then Montgomery and Radford. Floyd is at zero, even though we are at Floyd. Again, it's about meet, it's about meeting people and building that trust. And it's really hard to build that trust with some of these communities. We are the government, and they don't trust the government, so it takes a lot. I, I think Pulaski honestly is a little bit more trusting because they have a much higher overdose rate, and people are dying at a higher rate in Pulaski. They have the highest overdose rate in our localities. And so I think they are a little bit more trusting. And if you see the two visits, we don't actually go into the home, but we go into neighborhoods. We meet people. If they say, hey, can you meet me in the park, we'll go meet them in the park. If they say, can you meet me here, we'll meet them there. And then our mobile clinic goes out into different communities. Very few actually come into our offices because it still is an illegal thing, drugs, and, and they're still very stigmatized, so people don't wanna be seen. Insurance status is actually a good thing. 80% of our clients have insurance. So when we are ready to refer them, we can get them in, we can get them treatment. It's just building up to where we can get them in. This is our item distribution. You can see that we do a lot of things with harm reduction. We do education, we do outreach, we provide harm reduction kits, which are safe-use kits. We provide wound care kits because people who inject drugs get abscesses. They get really nasty wounds on their body. We provide general hygiene kits. A lot of our folks, as I said, are homeless, and just basic things like soap and shampoo and razors and deodorant go a long way. We provide them food. We provide them condoms, and we test them for sexually transmitted infections. And we provide women with feminine hygiene products. You'd be surprised how many women get arrested because they have to steal tampons. We do distribute syringes as well, in addition to naloxone and test strips. I think we have to understand that even though the drug of choice in this area is methamphetamine, it's almost all laced with fentanyl. And if they don't know that there's fentanyl in there, it can kill them. A very small dose of fentanyl is fatal. So we provide them with test trips to test their drugs and see if they have fentanyl in there. And then we do naloxone as well, which is the opioid reversal agent. This is some pretty significant data, and I'll tell you, the overdose data that the state collects is the fatal overdose data. We do not have a good source of non-fatal overdose data. And the reason we don't is because when they overdose, they treat each other and they don't call anybody. So we don't find out about it. But we are collecting this information, and you can see that we've had 183 overdoses reversed. Unfortunately, five of our participants have passed away, and we've used almost 350 doses of naloxone to reverse those overdoses. And the only way we can get them into treatment is if they're alive. So we've gotta do what we can, meet them where they are, and try and keep them alive until they're ready and willing to go to treatment. And this just talks about all of our services. Our services are so much more than what people wanna talk about, the drugs or the syringes or naloxone. It's about the education. It's about sitting there and talking to them. It's about listening to their story. It's about validating them, treating them with respect, treating them as a human being, and giving them those other supplies just to get them through until they're ready, and then when they are, connecting them. And this, you can see, we have referrals and linkages. 100 people we've referred, with 250 referrals. We refer them to Community Action About Housing. We refer them to Community Health Center. We refer them to Pyramid Health. We refer them to their private providers. We do testing and treatment for hepatitis C. We refer them to HIV care. We do wound care. So we try to get them referred to any resources that we have, and, and those are increasing every day because of the funding that we have through opioid abatement. This is just a letter, a note, and I'll tell you that this is one of many that we get from our participants about the meaning of this program. On the right, it says, "I don't know why anybody in this world would ever wanna treat an addict like, you know what, because we do that enough to ourselves." And that's the thing people need to understand. These folks already feel embarrassed and ashamed. They don't need us to do that to them as well. Nobody wakes up and wants to be addicted to drugs, lose everything, end up in jail. That's not what anybody aspires to. And the other, on the other side of her note is basically just how this program, because it treats her as a person and doesn't judge her, it's all about hope. And that's the biggest thing. So this just talks about syringe service programs, syringe exchange programs, and why they're important. We know the data's out there, this is evidence-based practice, that people who participate with syringe service programs are five times more likely to enter treatment than those who don't. It reduces needle-stick injuries amongst first responders. It reduces crime because if people are injecting drugs, they will find syringes. They will go steal them at Tractor Supply or Rural King. So it does reduce crime in those areas. Reduces overdose deaths, as we've already shown. It dramatically reduces HIV and hepatitis C. And I will tell you, our HIV and hepatitis C numbers have been climbing. We're six months into the program now, so hopefully we'll start to see those numbers going down. It saves lives and prevents infection. One of the people that works with me, all the folks that are working in my harm reduction program are in recovery themselves. One of them is a gentleman who used intravenous drugs and developed an infection called endocarditis, which is a bloodstream infection and gets into the heart valves. He had to have his heart valve replaced, and he lost the tips of his fingers due to that infection. So it reduces those risks significantly, and it saves money. It really does save healthcare money. This is just my staff out engaging with the community, trying to do some teaching and advocacy. And then just some of the comments, again, helped my sister turn her life around. It's amazing when we treat people like people and human beings, how receptive they are. When we talk about what's next, we're gonna continue to get out more. We actually got a, a new mobile unit that's a little bit more agile to get out into the community. We have a pharmacist in the area who's gonna go out with my folks and provide what we call bridge medication for opioid use disorder until we can get them in with a provider to follow them up. We're gonna work with our jails because there's the generational poverty, generational incarceration. So we've got to work with them. They're at the highest risk of overdose when they come out of jail because their tolerance is down, and they use it the same doses that they were using pre-incarceration. And then we're gonna continue to reduce stigma. That's the biggest thing, is getting the word out there about the trauma and the aces and people understanding how this all came from the war on drugs. Peer support services are critical. As I said, all of my folks are peers in recovery themselves because they can identify with where these folks are, and they give them hope that recovery is possible. Just a few words about adolescent drug use. The way to go with adolescents is actually a harm reduction approach as well. Programs that preach, do not use drugs and overemphasize the negative consequences of drugs don't work with kids. Kids are pretty savvy, and when you tell them that drugs are gonna do all these bad things, and they see friends who are using drugs and they're not seeing that, then you lose credibility. And harm reduction does work with kids, you know, and it follows along their developmental process because kids' decision-making doesn't fully develop until they're in their mid-20s. And so they use the amygdala, which is, is kind of that emotional impulsive decision-making. So harm reduction fits into that, trying to meet them where they are. So the next thing I was asked to talk about pivoting. We'll go to mosquito-borne illnesses. I will say that that is not a big problem in the New River Health District. Our climate really isn't significant for mosquitoes, and I'm gonna talk a little bit more about ticks. Most of the mosquito-borne illnesses here are imported from people who have traveled, whether it's Zika, Dengue, they've traveled someplace else. So West Nile virus, we've had one confirmed case in the past 10 years locally, and that was an imported case of someone who had traveled to an endemic area. Most of these illnesses cause kind of that typical viral syndrome, kind of achy, fatigue, malaise, just not feeling good. Unfortunately, like any infection, they can progress, and they can cause heart problems, they can cause neurologic problems, they can cause kidney problems. So, you know, unfortunately, for some people, they can be much more serious than others. For most of us, it's a bad flu and we can get better. Lacrosse virus, it's mostly asymptomatic. People don't even know they have it, but sometimes it can be a little bit more serious. As you can see, it's more to the west of us, in West Virginia and Kentucky, and further southwest Virginia, but nothing that we've seen here. I know everyone's concerned because it made the news about eastern equine encephalitis, which can be very serious. We really haven't seen that, we don't expect to see that. That's gonna be more in your east coast marshy areas. So when we talk about prevention of mosquito-borne illness, it really is to limit any standing water. Not a good idea to have bird baths or buckets of water or puddles of water, ponds and things. That's all standing water. Make sure we have screens on our windows and doors if we have open windows. It's really good to wear long sleeves and long pants, especially at dusk and dawn. That's when mosquitoes are most active. And then to use insect repellents. As I said, the bigger thing in the New River Valley is tick-borne illness. We are, if you look on the map of Virginia, we are bright red for Lyme disease. We also have ehrlichiosis, anaplasmosis, and, and a couple of other things. The most common one is gonna be Lyme disease. I think everybody knows it's that target lesion. Same things, symptoms usually are gonna be just a kind of a viral flu-like illness, but it can cause heart inflammation, it can cause meningitis, which is an inflammation of, of the fluid around the brain and the spinal cord. And it can, can, can Um, and it can, can, can cause joint pains and, and joint arthritis as well. It's caused by the black-legged or deer ticks. The problem is people often don't know they've had a tick bite because the ticks are very, very small. And you can see on the fingernail there, um, some of the ticks, the baby ticks especially are really small and people don't know that they've been bitten. And the, the key is early diagnosis. So if you see that bullseye rash, i- if you start feeling sick or if you find a tick on yourself or the pet, to get early diagnosis. Because if we can get that treated, it significantly reduces the risk of long-term complications from Lyme disease. Other tick-borne illnesses, as I said, ehrlichiosis, anaplasmosis, same thing. Um, but again, in some people, these will develop to be more symptomatic. Rocky Mountain spotted fever is the more severe of the spotted fever, rickettsiosis. Um, those are on, uh, black-legged ticks, long-star ticks and, uh, American dog ticks. And then of course we have tularemium babesiosis. Those are all, you know, very similar in symptoms and we do have those ticks in this area. So again, tick-borne illness is much more concerning in this area than mosquito-borne illnesses. Prevention, um, obviously keeping our grass cut. And then using insect repellents with DEET or any, uh, you know, several of the oils, eucalyptus lemon, those kinds of things are insect repellents. And then you can treat your, your, um, clothing and gear with permethrin. That doesn't go directly on the skin, but it treats the clothing. And it actually does work for a while. And then obviously be very careful with pet exposure or children and, and read the instructions on those. Really important when we're out and about, check our pets for ticks. They bring the ticks in the house a lot. And then after we've been out and about, to do those, um, tick checks and check those, you know, the scalp and the neck, the ears, the back, underarms, the belly button, the groin area, between the legs, behind the knees. Uh, really important to check. And then if you do find a tick, you want to use a pair of tweezers and just pull it straight out and then clean the area with soap and water. Another thing I want to talk is we are in the radon belt here in the New River Valley. Montgomery County is right in that red area that is, uh, high radon levels. A lot of people don't realize that. Um, radon, like smoking, is a cause of lung cancer. Radon is the second leading cause of lung cancer. I will say, it's not, it, it's about ten times less than smoking. Smoking-associated lung cancer is in the two hundred thousand range. Radon's in the twenty thousand range. But if you take people who smoke and have radon exposure, that risk goes up. Uh, just really wanted to make people aware that with VDHradon.org, they can request and get a radon test kit for their house, um, for four dollars for shipping and then send it back in and get the testing done. Um, and, you know, we know that radon is most likely in the, the basement area of a home and that's where the testing will be done. The health department does not provide radon mitigation testing or treatment. Um, it can be somewhat expensive, but we do try to connect people to those services if they do need radon mitigation in their homes. And I will say, even new homes, even though they're supposed to have radon mitigation, I have a home that was built in twenty twenty and I just tested our home and the radon level was ten. Um, and we have a system in that needed a fan put in. So, um, even people in newer homes really should test for radon. Finally, respiratory illnesses, cold and flu and everything else season is upon us. Um, this is data as of last week. You can see, um, they say that the overall respiratory illness trend in Virginia is low, but it is trending up and we do expect it to continue trending up. Um, and when we talk about respiratory illnesses, we talk about all the respiratory illnesses. It's not just COVID anymore. We really need to get back to talking about COVID, flu and RSV, respiratory syncytial virus. But you can see the numbers are, are fairly low for the ED visits and seeking medical care. Um, on the right side, you know, this is our respiratory illness trend. Uh, you can see southwest Virginia is still in the low. That's not unusual. Um, things tend to work their way down the highways from the more crowded areas. So we will definitely see northern Virginia, central Virginia, um, start to see their peaks and, and then it'll make its way to us. But on the left-hand side, you can see that we're following the trend of the past couple of years. Um, these illnesses, we know, are spread when people are forced indoors. And that's when it's cold out and people are inside because of the heat. Um, COVID is more transmissible than flu, so we do see kind of a late summer peak in COVID as well, just because people go inside for the air conditioning, but it's so much more transmissible than flu. If you look at, you know, um, regarding COVID, we have immunity now. When COVID first came on the scene, nobody had any immunity. But now between infection, which most people have had COVID and/or immunization, we have really good immunity. So the severity of COVID is much, much less. And usually when these viruses evolve, they evolve to be more transmissible and less virulent overall, less severe overall. And that certainly has been the case with COVID. Um, it's all evolution or it's all evolving from Omicron at this point, which is much less severe than the Delta or the original, um, virus. So you can see that we do see deaths from COVID and other respiratory illnesses. Um, on the left-hand side, it kind of follows that seasonal pattern. On the right-hand side is our pediatric deaths. Pediatric deaths from COVID are extremely rare, but we do see pediatric deaths from flu. Um, most years we will see at least a handful of pediatric deaths. Uh, this year so far, we have not seen any, but, um, most years we will see at least, uh, a handful of them. This again just shows the, the lab testing. People start to get symptomatic in that late summertime when it's hot and everyone's inside. So of course the numbers go up. That's the chart on the right. On the left, we're talking about, um, influenza lab reports. There's influenza A, influenza B. Um, you know, we expect to start seeing influenza go up over the next couple of months into the springtime, but then it will drop off as you get into April and May. Usually we start off seeing more influenza A, which the reports we are getting now are influenza A. And then in the springtime tends to be a little bit more influenza B. Um, outbreaks of respiratory illnesses, they're going to be in congregate settings. So our nursing home facilities, they're going to have outbreaks. Our childcare and school facilities may have outbreaks and our healthcare facilities as well. And that's just what this shows. And again, you can sort of see that it is a seasonal trend. This is our vaccination status. Um, the orange line is our COVID vaccine update so far this year as opposed to flu. You know, uh, our COVID vaccine uptake has definitely gone down. Um, flu vaccine is a little bit more longstanding. I think people have more trust of that. COVID vaccine does admittedly have some side effects. And I think it's important that people understand that vaccines, like any other medical intervention, have risks and benefits. And it's really important to talk to their provider about what their risks are from the actual disease versus the, the vaccination as well. And so, um, you know, when it's appropriate, it's definitely appropriate. When, when it's not, that's something, that's a decision for that person and that person's provider. And again, we go back to that risk determination. It, it's everyone's perception of what their risk is. And this just again shows that things are going to go up and down, um, seasonally with our respiratory illnesses. So that's all I had. I'm happy to take any questions. It was like, public health 101 in what, twenty minutes?
Wow. Yeah, I feel like we went to a course or something. Yeah, um, I'll see if there are any questions. Let me look down here. Any questions from down here? Okay, how about over here? Okay. Um, on behalf of the board, I want to thank you. That was a lot of information and, uh, I did get some questions during the summer about the, um, mosquitoes and the ticks, um, especially Lyme disease. There seemed to be a rise in that. But thank you for all this information. I mean, that's a lot. And hopefully people will watch this at home and, and it can be caught up also.
The thing that's frustrating with Lyme disease is people know, when we go out and do educational programs, people know the ways to prevent it. They just don't do it.
Yeah.
But yeah, I think the media kind of got on the eastern equine encephalitis and we really just don't see the mosquitoes as much here because of our, our climate.
Yeah. Well, thank you for taking the time to educate us.
Thank you.
All right. So next, um, we move to public address and, uh, we had a sign-up sheet out front that we had a couple citizens sign in. But if you didn't have a chance to sign in and you want to speak after those two citizens, um, you may come up. Uh, basically, when you come up, you come up to the podium, you'll see a little box there and you have four minutes. And at three minutes, the yellow light goes off. And at four minutes, the red light goes off and that means your four minutes is up. You direct all your comments to the board. And this is our time to listen, um, to what you have to bring to us and we don't comment on that. And if you have anything that you want to leave with us, you may give it to our clerk, Miss Sweeney down there at the end. And so with that being said, um, I'll call up our first, uh, citizen that signed in. That's, uh, Rhianne Watson. And she's followed by Matthew Watson. Welcome.
Hi. Um, so again, I am Rhianne Watson. I'm a licensed veterinary technician. Um, I live one four nine and one Pilot Road. That is directly adjacent to, um, the proposed Cowan commercial facility. I think you've received emails from many, many people I know, um, as well as my husband, um, and the community opposing this. Um, and I want to, today, I've explained a lot about our personal history and reasons you shouldn't breed and how you breed and the things you do. The things I'd like to address today, if I have time, are the differences between, uh, a breeder, commercial breeder, at-home breeder, I just have two dogs I breed every now and again, and a shelter or rescue environment. Um, so my training is in, uh, veterinary care, but half of my, uh, at least ten years plus of my, um, professional career have been in a rescue or humane environment. Um, so here are some of the biggest differing laws. Um, if you adopt a puppy, purebred otherwise, from a shelter, um, it is either already spayed and neutered or the legal requirement is within thirty days of their six-month birthday. That is to prevent pet overpopulation. Um, we've seen failures, but in general, people do what they're supposed to. They sign contracts, the law can go after you if you don't do them. We occasionally see, you know, brother and sister, they were six months, six months old. They can get pregnant at six months old. They can get pregnant through kennels. Um, you have a chain-linked fence. Everybody's maybe knows a dog can tie and, and pregnant one another through a chain of fence. Um, so also in a shelter environment, you're not allowed to leave the surrounding counties if you're intact. If you are a private breeder, commercial breeder, you can send an intact dog anywhere you want to in the country. There's no laws whatsoever. Um, there are health certificates you have to have, um, which maybe an airline might require, maybe. Um, if you cross a country, you can go out of the country with them. Um, if you are a rescue group, uh, humane society, animal control, that's not allowed. Um, and there are reasons for that. Pet overpopulation. Um, we spay them at six weeks old, um, eight weeks old, ten weeks old. The reason is if you're high-risk, if you are trapped in a trap, you're in a family, you have a ca- a female and ten males, we'll fix you at six weeks old, perfectly healthy. And there's a reason for that. If you have brothers and sisters, mothers and fathers breeding together, you don't have healthy animals. You don't have happy animals. And that's what's important to us. Every day, we see them walk into the clinic. They're too young, they've not been vaccinated, they are too old, they have diseases. Breast cancer. Today, we had to do a radical mastectomy, take off an entire chain because the dog was never spayed. And she had a uterus that was, as we call, well-loved. Um, which means, had she been spayed, had she not been bred until she was nine years old, she would have been perfectly healthy. Today, we had to, you know, remove an entire chain of her, her breast and spay her. But now it's way too late. Um, and that's what we want to prevent, is the way-too-lates of the world. We want to make sure you have your rabies vaccines, you have your kennel tags. Those are very important things. And unfortunately, from this side of the podium, we don't know if that's the case. I, I hope to God you guys do. Um, as a veterinary professional, it means a lot to us to know that animals are happy, healthy, safe, and finding homes. Um, so I guess I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. And Matthew Watson?
Hi there. My name's Matthew Watson, living at, at four nine zero one Pilot Road. Um, here again, just, uh, in opposition, uh, to the commercial dog, uh, kennel and, uh, breeding facility being built. Um, last time I came and talked, uh, with you guys, I talked a little bit about what, uh, some of the worst-case scenarios can, can be when we have some of these, uh, facilities that end up having, falling on hard times and they can end up having issues of overpopulation and runaway breeding. And by runaway breeding, I mean dogs that end up breeding with other dogs in the population that was never the intention of having to breed in the first place. You end up with puppies that are unwanted and then you end up with more and more dogs that, well, unfortunately, in some cases, the business cannot keep up with the care for. That usually leads to expansion of housing facilities that go beyond the scope of what was brought up in, uh, this proposal. Usually people have to house those dogs in order to keep the females and males away from each other in outdoor facilities that they'd have to makeshift on their own. Uh, or have to overcrowd areas that they can inside the facility. So that's one of the big things that I just want to make sure that you're aware of as far as animal husbandry and kind of the downside of how this can be an animal welfare issue is that if this does run away, if, and every commercial breeder never wants that to happen, no one wants that to happen, but it does and it can. So if that does happen, uh, we could have a lot of dogs that are going to end up in a very bad way. And we have many dogs that need a home now and that are in the shelter facilities that really do need a place and, uh, a forever home. So that's the, the one, uh, thing I would like you to know about. The other is that, uh, when it comes to noise again of all these dogs that are going to be in the facility, that's not just our house or other houses that'll be able to hear, uh, the dogs outside as well as the Pilot, uh, Community Center. They'll be able to hear the dogs as well. That is another, uh, point that I'd like to rise in opposition of, that's something that I would not like to, uh, to hear either. So, um, I think, uh, I've already talked about my, uh, moral disapproval of, of breeding dogs, given the fact we have, um, a lot of dogs that are already need homes in, in the county. Um, I, I don't believe that the community wants this to be approved. I don't believe that the community needs this. I don't believe Montgomery County needs a breeding, a commercial breeding facility. And I would urge you to, uh, uh, vote in the negative on this, uh, proposal. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Would anyone else like to come forward at this time? Okay, come on up then, state your name and where you reside.
Good evening. Thank you. I'm Audrey Meehan and I live on Tanglewood Drive in Christiansburg. Uh, it's off of South Franklin Street, six miles from Pilot. Um, I appreciate you hearing the community on this matter. Um, I believe I brought up earlier, uh, when I spoke last time, about the environmental impact that the number of dogs can bring to the community. So, uh, there have been studies done on excess feces and urine. They increase the nitrogen and phosphorus levels and they interrupt the delicate ecosystem. Uh, it's been shown that, um, these extra nutrients take a long time to get out of the soil. The neighbors bale their hay, it affects the grasses. Um, it also affects the wildlife. Um, there's turkeys, there's owls, other animals and such that rely on the grasses as well. And also, the soil would be flushed with rain and whatever directly into Crab Creek. And, um, the fish and other animals in that area can be affected. I'm a former, uh, microbiologist that worked at Novozymes, which is an environmental company. I also did research on the Animal Welfare Act because I'm an animal lover. There are federal laws in place that, um, restrict certain, um, they protect the animals. And, um, the Cowan's request for this, um, special thing um, does not show how the animals will be cared for. They gave a great schematic of the house above, but not the kennel itself, which is what they're applying for. Uh, the Animal Welfare Act requires specific enclosures, twenty to thirty square feet floor space for each animal. They require separate, uh, housing facilities for the males and the females and a separation of mothers with puppies. I also feel like there's a big red flag where the, um, there's a big red flag where the initial, I don't know what it's called, never mind. Anyway, but the puppies have to be taken off the property and delivered via a store parking lot. It's pretty unheard of that someone can't go and visit the facility where the puppies are being raised. That's a big red flag. Also, even if less than half of the twenty-five dogs, they've estimated, if they mate two times a year, that'll produce over a hundred puppies. And Mr. Cowan even said that three from his last litter had never been sold. And we just don't need the extra unwanted dogs. I'm yellow now here, so I'm going to just ask you, please, consider denying this request for Montgomery County and the community. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Would anyone else like to come forward at this time? Come on up.
I'm Jason Cowan, and I reside at 4342 Quince Road, Pilot, Virginia. I'd like to first state that all the bad things that they brought up and all the, we're the exact opposite of them. There are laws, federal and state laws in the books, that allow that if there's a state veterinarian, you can come in and inspect, you need time to come in and look at how the animals are being treated. The state code in, I have it here, I can quote the statute if you were looking at it, but it defines a commercial breeder as one who keeps regularly thirty females, and it caps the maximum number of dogs for breeding at fifty. And right now, we have four that meet our breeding standards. And most of our dogs retire, you know, on the place, and we do have three puppies that didn't sell. You know what we did with them? We kept them. You know, we didn't just go and dump them off at the local resources. So, we're not going to be a drain on local resources. In fact, the number of dogs entering shelters has decreased every year since the Great Recession in 2008. The proposed location of the building far exceeds the setback requirements, in most cases by several hundred feet. Both my wife and I have regular employment, our animals, as well as other farm income, like sheep and goats. So, we're not, like, currently relying upon this to, like, pay our bills. You know, we both, we both work. Our animals right now, they live, I think, pretty well. They're well-cared-for, they're well-loved, they're walked every day, they're supervised, they enjoy outside the beautiful farm that we were blessed to receive and purchase. Yeah, so I think, like I said before, when I was before the planning commission, it's very reasonable. You know, there are millions of people who are thankful to have purchased a dog from a reputable and honest breeder. We screen our people, we have a long application, we often recommend they not buy it if it's not going to be a good situation for the dog. Because, you know, if they're living in an apartment, and they are going to be in a crate all day, we may say, hey, maybe consider, you know, waiting until you have a better situation, or consider a different breed, all those things. So, at the end of the day, I hope that you support this, because it's going to make both our lives better and our animals' lives better. And the only thing that, I didn't submit, like, a schematic of the kennel, like, the lower level, because nobody asked me to, you know? But our plan is, just like they said, the requirements were, two whelping boxes separately for the mothers, and then a separate area for the males, and a separate area for the females. And they'd always be able to go in and out of, you know, outside, if they had to go to the bathroom, or if they want to get outside and enjoy the air, or whatever. You know, that's our plan. You know, I mean, I can draw it for you if you'd like, but, I mean, it's reasonable, you know? So, anyway, that's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you. Would anyone else like to come forward at this time to address us on any county issues? Okay, seeing no one, we'll close public address, and we'll move to addendum. Ms. Hill, do we have an addendum tonight?
No, we do not.
All right, let's go to items of consent. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All right, roll call, please.
Mr. Fitchakowski?
Aye.
Mr. Motts?
Aye.
Mr. Grafsky?
Aye.
Ms. Boone?
Aye.
Mr. Kits?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Chair Biggs?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Okay. That takes us to old business, which is a special use permit for the commercial kennel. Is there a motion in regards to this?
I'd like to make a motion, so we can discuss it.
Okay, there's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, okay, go ahead.
Okay, all right. And let's go back to Supervisor King, since he wanted to discuss.
It's been, it's been a while since we've had something in front of us that brought this many people out. We heard from this many people. I think so far, I've heard from over thirty people. I mean, they catch them in the stores, and that's fine. That's what I enjoy, talking to people. That's why I'm here. And they talk to me about their community. They're not against the family, theirself, they're just, they have questions over this many dogs in their neighborhood. So, my job is to represent the majority of the people. And the majority of them have spoke to me, don't want this in their community. And I know, I don't know this, but I feel the people would be good to the animals, the dogs, I really do. But for right now, the community is telling me that they don't want this in their community. So, with that being said, I will have to vote against it.
Okay. Okay, does anyone else want to speak about the current motion on the floor, courses to approve? Is there anyone that wants to speak up about the motion, or about the situation? Yes, Supervisor Grafsky?
Like Supervisor King, I, you know, I share the sentiment that, obviously, the overwhelming public opinion in this request is not in support of it. And, you know, I mean, I have some limited experience in breeding dogs, but, you know, very small, one dog twice. That was a whole lot of work, and we both had jobs as well. But, you know, if this isn't, the applicant noted, you know, this isn't their core source of income, things like that, if they've got four dogs, I don't know where the limit starts, or the number of dogs that you're breeding that makes you a commercial breeder. Versus, I was trying, I've been trying to find that information. I don't know if we have that information.
Bree? Bree?
Or what that threshold is, I guess.
Good evening. So, our ordinance doesn't actually have a threshold.
Okay.
So, if you have two dogs that you breed, and you are selling the puppies, essentially, you should have a special use permit to do that in Montgomery County.
Okay.
Because at that point, it is considered a business. You're making, making money.
My dog's spayed.
So, that's whether you have two dogs, or you have ten dogs. The other thing I will point out, as far as the concern of how many dogs will be on the property, we have no limit on the number of household pets in Montgomery County. So, the limit on this special use permit would be twenty-five dogs, over the age of six months, I believe. And without the special use permit, he can have twenty-five dogs, period, as long as he is not breeding and selling and operating it as a commercial kennel.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
You're welcome.
But regardless, with that, you know, like Supervisor King, you know, I think we, at least I feel compelled to side with the majority of folks here, and not support this, at least at this time in its current presentation.
Anyone down here?
So, to say I got inundated with emails and people talking to me would be an understatement. But I did some research, and I talked to, you know, different people, and I looked at the regulations, and where it is federal, and where it is through the Commonwealth, to see where we were at. And again, I'm with Supervisor King and Supervisor Grafsky. I don't feel that there's any mal-intent here at all, but I've got to listen to people when they come, it comes this strong, this hard, this fast. I haven't seen a single issue in the last year that carried this many people to feel compelled to say something. And I have to support Supervisor King in his process for this.
Anybody else that would like to say anything? Okay. All right, so the motion on the floor is to approve, and so, if you want to approve, you're voting yes, and if you don't, you're voting no. So, I guess for a, for a roll call.
Mr. Motts?
No.
Mr. Grafsky?
No.
Ms. Boone?
Abstain.
Mr. Kits?
No.
Mr. Fitchakowski?
No.
Mr. King?
No.
Chair Biggs?
No.
Okay, six noes, one abstain.
Okay. All right. So, moving ahead to new business, our first item is reimbursement agreement between Montgomery County and New River Valley Regional Commission. I'll let Ms. Hill speak to that.
Madam Chair, before we move forward, can we just explain what the no vote meant?
It means it's not approved.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. But they could still reorganize and come back at a later time, correct?
Sure, yeah, unless the application's got to substantially change.
Right.
Or they got to wait a year.
Because I think the two issues that I heard, the number of dogs, and also what that facility would look like that would be keeping the dogs. So, if they went back and came forward, do they have to wait a certain amount of time, Mr. McMahon?
One year, yeah. I just wanted to be, make sure everyone was clear, not this board, but that the no vote meant the SUP was denied.
Right.
Thank you.
Okay, all right. Okay. I'll go back to Ms. Hill with the reimbursement agreement. Do you want to speak to that at all?
Yes, I'll be glad to. You may recall, a few months ago, the board approved a support agreement between Montgomery County and the New River Valley Regional Commission that stated that Montgomery County would enter into a moral obligation for the debt that is going to be incurred by the regional commission to purchase a building for their office space in Christiansburg. This formalizes the reimbursement between Montgomery County and the regional commission, if the commission were not able to make their debt payments. No one anticipates that, but of course, we need an agreement that addresses what happens if that occurs. And the agreement states that if the regional commission cannot make the payments, then the county will step in and make the payments. And ultimately, if the regional commission cannot, within, I believe, twelve months, correct that lack of payment, the property would become the property of the county.
Okay. Any questions about that? Yes, Supervisor King?
So, if they didn't make the payments, we give them a twelve months to catch up?
That's correct. And if they don't catch up, then the property would revert to the county.
If they don't make their payments, and we have to wait eleven months, do we charge them interest on that?
Yeah, we, I mean, we don't have to wait. When, once they don't pay, like, if the payment's not made to the bond, then, and if the planning commission, so, hasn't made that payment, then they have to pay us. And if they don't pay us, they're in default. And that's without demand or saying you have to pay us. So, the agreement kicks in upon non-payment. They have twelve months before we take the property. Taking the property's a pretty drastic thing.
Yeah.
We still have, like, a lien there. I mean, so, we're protected, so they do have twelve months at that point. But it's five percent is the interest rate. Once the payment's one day late, five percent's kicking in. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, Supervisor Boone?
If they don't make payments, we still have to make the payment, so we're making payments.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, so, we need a motion to put that on the floor, and then a second.
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion or questions? All right, roll call, please. Mr. Grafsky?
Aye.
Ms. Boone?
Aye.
Mr. Kits?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Fitchakowski?
Aye.
Mr. Motts?
Aye.
Chair Biggs?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Which leads us to our next item under new business, the NRV Regional Commission appropriation, and I'll go back to Ms. Hill.
Also, if you recall, the county and other jurisdictions that are members of the regional commission have chosen to cash fund their portion of this building purchase, which will help us by saving interest for Montgomery County. This resolution appropriates the funding for that, and it also transfers some funding from general contingencies to the regional commission to cover our per capita share of the regional housing trust fund. If you recall, Jennifer Welsey came and made a presentation about that program a few months ago. We originally anticipated that that program would get started in the next fiscal year, but they're going to start the program now, so this transfer of funds will shore up the county's payment to the regional commission for that program.
Any questions on that? Yes, Supervisor Boone?
Ms. Hill, you said that it would save interest for the county. Is that because we're not borrowing as much? I thought...
The regional commission is issuing bonds for the portion of the project that they need to borrow the money for. They don't have to borrow money for our portion, so we don't have to pay interest on that. So, our portion is lower. It makes the regional commission itself pay a lower amount of interest, and the county doesn't have to participate in the interest payment.
I'm sorry, I misheard what you originally said. I must have, thank you.
Okay. Anything else? All right, so do we need a motion then, and a second?
Motion.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All right, roll call, please. Ms. Boone?
Aye.
Mr. Kits?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Fitchakowski?
Aye.
Mr. Motts?
Aye.
Mr. Grafsky?
Aye.
Chair Biggs?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
All right, third item is our resolution of support for the Carillion Kidney Transplant Services. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Kits?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Fitchakowski?
Aye.
Mr. Motts?
Aye.
Mr. Grafsky?
Aye.
Ms. Boone?
Aye.
Chair Biggs?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Our fourth item is MCPS Capital Fund Transfer. Do you want to say anything about that, Ms. Hill?
I can briefly say something about that, and Angie Bland is here from the schools as well, if you have additional questions. This is a transfer of funds from undesignated school capital projects funds that the county has transferred in to two specific projects.
Okay. Any questions about that? All right.
So moved.
Oh, do you have a question?
So moved.
Okay. And a second?
Second.
All right. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Fitchakowski?
Aye.
Mr. Motts?
Aye.
Mr. Grafsky?
Aye.
Ms. Boone?
Aye.
Mr. Kits?
Aye.
Chair Biggs?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Okay, our next item is the FY24 County carryover. Ms. Hill, would you like to say anything before we put that on the floor?
I'll be happy to answer any questions. There is a chart attached that details the requests that are funded in this item. It's for one-time-only items, resulting from funds that remained at the end of fiscal year twenty-four for various departments.
Okay, any questions? All right, motion?
Motion.
A second?
Second.
Okay, any further comments? All right, roll call, please.
Mr. Fitchakowski?
Aye.
Mr. Motts?
Aye.
Mr. Grafsky?
Aye.
Ms. Boone?
Aye.
Mr. Kits?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Chair Biggs?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
All right, next, we move to fire and EMS one-time items. Ms. Hill, do you want to say anything about that?
Sure. It took my computer a second to catch up, but it did now. If you'll recall, in the spring, when the board was approving the fiscal year twenty-five budget... budget, it's still hard to say fiscal year twenty-five, we included funding to staff paid firefighters in the Elliston area of the eastern Montgomery area of the county, on twelve-hour shifts, and we knew at that time that there would be a need for some one-time items, we had already appropriated about a hundred thousand dollars of that, and this appropriates the remaining need for different kinds of gear, uniform, personal protective equipment, and other supplies and equipment.
Any questions on that? All right, motion?
Motion.
And a second?
Second.
Okay, any other comments? All right, roll call, please.
Ms. DeMots?
Aye.
Mr. Grafski?
Aye.
Ms. Boone?
Aye.
Mr. Kits?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Fitchukowski?
Aye.
Chair Biggs?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
And our final item under new business is economic development appropriation, do you want to say anything about that, Ms. Hill?
Yes. The Economic Development Authority maintains the Volin Branch Corporate Park, and part of that is maintaining the stormwater pond, and there's some repairs and upgrades that need to be made to the pond to keep it in compliance with the regulations that are enforced by the town of Christiansburg. The Economic Development Authority has funds that are set aside at the end of each year in a reserve account, which are the remaining economic development department's ending budget dollars. So, we're transferring those funds, or appropriating those funds, I should say, for use by the Economic Development Authority to maintain this pond.
Okay, any questions there? All right, a motion?
Motion.
And a second?
Second.
Okay, any further comment? Roll call, please.
Mr. Grafski?
Aye.
Ms. Boone?
Aye.
Mr. Kits?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Fitchukowski?
Aye.
Ms. DeMots?
Aye.
Chair Biggs?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Okay, that takes us to our reports. County Attorney?
I have no report, Madam Chair.
Oh, all right, County Administrator?
We've had a busy couple of weeks, we spoke about that a little earlier, we had a great legislative dinner with various representatives from the state, and then, we've had FEMA meetings throughout the week to talk about, the past two weeks actually, to talk about the county and other local governments that are affected, were impacted by Hurricane Helene, also, the New River Regional Water Authority will be able to recover some cost as part of that. So we had meetings that talked about the process for collecting the information and submitting that. Several of us, Chair Biggs, Vice Chair Fitchukowski, and Chris Lawrence, Deputy County Administrator, and I attended the New River Valley Regional Water Authority grand opening last weekend, that was really good, it was a high point after a rough couple of weeks, so that was a great experience, they've done such a good job there renovating that facility, it was a grand reopening, I believe is how they coined that. And then, Scott Wooderman and I, the Assistant County Administrator, attended a behavioral health court graduation, which was really, it had a lot of impact too, those are important things that really help our community in a special way. So that was a good experience last Friday.
Okay, all right, let's go to Supervisor Reports, and Supervisor Boone, do you have a report tonight?
No report.
Okay, how about Supervisor Kits?
No report.
Supervisor King?
Don't have no report, but I would like to thank the stores, I ain't gonna mention no names, because all of them was involved, when we had that situation with the flooding and the water, each one of them stepped up and got every little water they could get in their stores. And now they're stuck with a lot of it. But, but that just shows you how retailers and citizens stick together, and they do what they need to do.
Yeah, that's a really good point, okay.
There's one thing for Scott, I ain't seen no lights out there, I seen the poles, but no lights on.
Okay, all right, Supervisor DeMots?
Just a small report, I had the opportunity this Saturday to spend some time at the Blacksburg Community Center where early voting was being conducted, and so I got to see and engage with some voters, talk to a lot of people that were coming in and out of that early voting center. Saturday was homecoming in Blacksburg, and so, a lot of people were fully decked out in their hokey gear as they came to vote. I was there starting at nine when early voting opened, and so I got to see kind of the crowds as they were, you know, going from voting to the game. It was very interesting in the conversations that I did have, I talked with people that self-reported that they lived in Christiansburg, they lived in Shawsville, they lived in Plum Creek, and of course, a lot of Blacksburg residents, I think, were coming over for the game, and made voting a part of it, I thought that was kind of interesting. And there was a ton of people that walked up and biked up, including several members of a young soccer team, so the kids came up on bikes with their parents, of course, and still had their cleats on from their soccer practice or game that morning. So it was just interesting to see the folks that were coming, and then when I left in the early afternoon, I did get some information on our turnout so far, so at the location in Christiansburg, as of Saturday afternoon, now this has changed with the rest of the day, Saturday and today, but as of Saturday afternoon, Christiansburg, over ten thousand Montgomery County residents had taken advantage of the opportunity to early vote there, and so, early voting there began on September twentieth, early voting in Blacksburg began on October twenty-first, and as of Saturday afternoon, over two thousand people had used that location for early voting. Several people also commented that they would love to see it in more locations throughout the county, but, just wanted to kind of give that report of my experience this past weekend working at that voting location.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Grafski?
No, but thank you Supervisor DeMots for volunteering, and for the update on, the reminder that we can still early vote all the way through this Saturday.
That's true. All right, and Vice Chair Fitchukowski?
Yeah, Angie mentioned that we took a tour of the Water Authority, it was very fascinating what their capabilities are, and what a very nicely-run facility it is, so it's, I'm glad we're a part of that, that's a plus. Also, I wanted to report a little bit about, I had my meeting at the Roanoke Valley Transportation Planning Organization, the TPO in Roanoke, and I was looking for a presentation that we watched last month, I can't find it, but when I do, I want to send it to you all, because it looks at our region economically, and how various regions, even down in North Carolina, are doing compared to us, and what unleashed their economic development versus the way we're doing it, or how we're facing it, and it was very interesting, I can't remember the group that actually did the study, but I thought it was very comprehensive, even though it was pretty widespread, that we really know exact specifics, but, it kind of flowed into the meeting that we had this week, and, or, I'm sorry, today's Monday, last week. And we started talking about it, and Phil North from Roanoke County, who's our chair this year, was talking about their legislative priorities. I think they got us beat on the size, because it actually folds in half, but, and we talked, and of course, you know, the TPO is made up of a lot of jurisdictions, but we talked about, we need to get together on these things, because there's one thing on here that I really never even thought of, but, provide funding for the Roanoke-Blacksburg Regional Airport to support a runway extension and other airport improvements. Something we, here, we don't talk much about, we have our own little airport, but, what that airport does for us, it really opens up a lot of things, but they need that runway extended to get the bigger jets in, and, but that's just one thing, I just wanted to throw that out there. So I would like to see us in the future, when we get ready to review our legislative priorities, that we maybe talk to Roanoke, talk to Bodata, talk to Franklin, talk to Pulaski, and if they have them, which they probably do, ask them to send a copy, and look them over, and see where we are all, or where we can work together, and if you all remember at our legislative dinner, that was a point that was driven home, that it works better for all of us if we get more jurisdictions involved, so, I just thought I'd throw that out there, I thought that was very interesting.
That sort of goes along with what we discussed at the legislative dinner, about the I-81 issue of our emergency response people going out there all the time, and it's not just us, it's the whole corridor, and that affects all those counties and localities along that corridor, and I think that was brought to our attention too, to sort of see if we could coordinate that, so, that's a good point. Okay, I was just going to echo, thank you Supervisor DeMots for that report, because I've had several people thank the board for having that location in Blacksburg, so that's good to know, and I can't believe the numbers, wow. Okay, so, I was just going to report, I sent you all an email that New River Community College, the new president is Dr. Robert Brandon, and I did have a chance, because I did go to all the different, like, the community meetings and the meet and greets and all, and I had a chance to meet him, I think that he's going to be a good asset for the community college, you know, it's sort of hard to even think about Pat Huber not being there, but, he is from the Southwest Virginia Community College, so he is familiar with the community college system in Virginia. And then, of course, I wanted to talk about the green light that everyone has, for those people that might be watching this, or listening to it, or hearing it later, we had an earlier event called Operation Green Light, where we are lighting our government building, the courthouse, and the public safety building from now until Veterans Day, in green lights to honor veterans, and is a way to remember them and the service that they have given. So, while this was going on, we had a gentleman, a veteran, go, and Mr. Kyle, and he went and brought a whole bunch of these, and I guess, are they downstairs, where are they going to be, Ms. Harris? Downstairs, and people can come pick one up, as long as we have them? So, yeah, so the idea is for everyone to put a green light, like, at their house and businesses, and hopefully, maybe in the two towns, so we can spread the word to honor